Called order to March 7th, 2016, Currituck County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to start tonight with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by the Reverend Bill Maciangelo from the Moyoc United Methodist Church. I'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, spring is coming. Daffodils are blooming, clocks are being put ahead, farmers are out and about, sports are being played, the OBX is getting ready for the summer, and the election season is in full swing. But it's still business as usual for our elected government officials. Father, we seek blessings on the task before the commissioners this evening. Bless their efforts with clear insights, their deliberations with wisdom, and their decisions with impartiality. And may they always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens of Currituck County. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray this night. Amen?
Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next will be for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda tonight under new business on item A, consideration in action, the Moyoc Commons Phase Two. This item requires majority of the board to be present, and with Mr. Hall's absence, I would like to postpone this item until a later date till the full board can be present. Other than that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for approval.
All right. We have the motion before us as amended.
I'll second.
All right.
May I ask a question of the attorney?
Absolutely.
When you said a majority, I think that it's a super majority. I'll ask Mr. McCray to explain that to the public.
Well, under Unified Development Ordinance, if a rezoning has been denied, then there's a one-year waiting period before a similar or same rezoning request can be made to the Board of Commissioners. There is a process by which someone may request a waiver of that one-year period, and the Board of Commissioners may waive that waiting period if they can make one of four findings which are set forth in the ordinance. The ordinance further provides that in any event, the Board of Commissioners may only waive that one-year waiting period by a two-thirds majority vote. So that would require five commissioners to vote in the affirmative in order to waive the one-year-long waiting period. I believe what understand Commissioner Gilbert to want to do is to make sure that there is a full board to consider this matter and not to, I guess, to give the applicant every opportunity to be able to convince possibly five members of the board to vote in the affirmative.
Okay, any questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We'll have a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion passes unanimously. First item on the public hearing is Public Hearing in Action PB 15-27, 84 Lumber Company. 84 Lumber Company is requesting a conditional rezoning of a 10.48 acre parcel from heavy industrial to general, GB, general business, to conditional heavy industrial in order to accommodate a warehouse and distribution and retail use to be located partially in the area currently zoned, general business. The property is located at Tax Map 23, Parcel 68J in Moyoc Township, near the intersection of Currituck Highway and Windchaser Way. We will open the hearing, and with that, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'm going to defer to Lori Lo Cicero, our new Assistant Planning Director. She did work on the staff report for the 84 lumber case, and she's going to present the information for the board's consideration.
Thank you.
I'm looking at it. Well, good evening. I'm going to talk to you today about the rezoning for 84 lumber. The location of this, okay, on this ortho photo here in front of us, the location of this parcel is the southeast of Windchaser Way along Currituck Highway. And you can see it backs up to the rail spur. They are requesting a conditional rezoning from heavy industrial and general business there, that first 250 feet, general business, to a conditional heavy industrial. The reason they are requesting this is that our general business does not allow outside storage, and 84 lumber will be needing outdoor storage, and they actually are going to be in that 250 feet of the general business. So they're wanting to get rid of the general business so they can have outdoor storage over the parcel. Our future land use map shows this area as rural, but this rezoning would follow, fall under policies for the, for some economic development and community appearance policies within the land use plan. This area has been designated in the Moyoc Small Area Plan as limited service, and particularly, this area is an activity center. And one of the reasons that this would be in a good activity center in the limited service is it does have access to the railroad there, as well as the street frontage along Currituck Highway. So they are proposing three buildings. The first one, the largest one, is going to be about 20,000 square feet. Now, this area will be the retail center, housing retail space and office space, and there's going to be two areas of, two storage sheds, 210 feet, 40 by 210 feet storage sheds. And these storage sheds are the reason that they are actually requesting the rezoning to conditional heavy industrial. Here are some renderings of what they are going to do with the, with the retail frontage, the large building, and the two storage sheds.
Is that from, is that from 168?
Yes.
Yes, yes. This is, yes, the big gray area right here in the front, that's 168.
It's about right, because there's no lines on it.
It'd be nice, when you have some big massive traffic area. Here's some more, these are what they're proposing for the area to look like, the site to look like. Now, the Technical Review Committee has suggested four, essentially four, conditions. And the first one is for, let me get back. It's, I guess, windows on the front facade shall be at least 30% of the front facade area. They've agreed to that, and they've shown that here. They've also agreed to a wooden fence to be erected in front of the chain link fence. They have a security chain link fence on their property to protect their inventory, and they've agreed to a wooden fence in front of that chain link fence for appearance reasons. They've also agreed that the finishing material should not be a corrugated metal. The way I understand, it's going to be hardy plank and a metal roof, and the color scheme is going to be similar to that, the one in Manio, if anyone's familiar with that one. And the landscaping along the street front, let me get back, shall be increased to 140% of the required plantings to help soften the view and to screen some of the parking in that area. For this particular parcel, use permit was approved in 2008, but it expired before construction started. So now they're required to reapply for the conditional rezoning under since we've had changes in the Unified Development Ordinance. And this will give a retail face, a retail, a good retail area for this industrial park area along Windchaser. And they have agreed to these conditions for the appearance standards, maintaining a retail appearance of that front building with 84 lumber. So staff and planning board recommend approval of this rezoning with the, with the conditions. So, and I think the applicant is here tonight. Anybody has any questions for me before?
Yes, ma'am. The, the railroad crossing, I guess that's something that will be within their realm of working.
It's behind.
It's behind.
The building is, but you.
No, the railroad track is on the far side.
Oh, on the backside? Okay. I was thinking that was a railroad track up front. I was looking at it. Okay.
Now, here, yeah. The railroad is what comes off.
Cool, cool.
Yeah. They have rear access to the railroad to get in bulk items like lumber or any other bulk items that they'll need, so they'll have access to the railroad.
That's right. On the backside is the new concrete stuff, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the railroad splits them from the new concrete.
So there's no impediments there. Good.
Real quick question. The, the changes, the windows and the hardy plank and the color scheme, is that in the applicant's application, or how is that designated? I.e., do we need to move to include that if the motion for approval is stated? Is that captured somewhere?
They have agreed to these, these conditions?
But you need to move to include that as part of the conditional zoning approval, yeah. Those were conditions that arose during, during the process and through the planning board meeting.
And what was the window?
At least 30% of the front facade area.
Okay.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
And this is probably a policy question. It says, "The major arterial, streetscape landscaping shall be increased to 140% of the required plantings in order to further screen the buildings from Highway 168 and to soften the view of the parking lot." Now, I, you know, I'm all for softening the view and everything, but don't people kind of need to be able to see that there's a new business there?
They, they do, and they can cluster the landscaping. It doesn't have to be in a straight line. So I would, you know, hope that during the plan process, that landscaping would be more focused in front of the outdoor storage areas, the lumber building, material, the lumber supply buildings. The facade itself, the basic, the entrance that you want people to see, they can move landscaping in a manner that allows some visibility for motorists.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't have to be a straight line. It can be clustered.
Don't want us doing anything that would make them less than successful.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think that was the intent.
Okay.
What, Mr. Woody, what kind of signage can they have up front?
They can have 20 feet tall. It's similar to what you see there, actually. That's probably scaled to what they want. But generally, our sign ordinance for businesses is, I think it's 20 feet tall. You've kind of caught me off guard on that. But it allows over, about 160 square feet of signage. So they're pretty big.
But like, Mr.?
In addition to wall signage, yeah.
Long, Mr. O'Neill's question, I mean, their building and their colors and their, you know, their schemes is their advertising. So, like him, we don't want to close it up where you can't see it.
Correct.
Mr. Woody, would there be any necessary language we need to add to the motion in order to allow the leeway necessary to answer the questions posed by Commissioner O'Neill for visibility going forward?
I don't, I don't think so, because the ordinance by its very nature allows clustering of landscaping. However, just so everybody's in agreement and on the same page, you certainly could move to approve with the recommended conditions, with recommended conditions of approval, and state that landscaping shall be permitted to be clustered in a manner that allows visibility of the building. I think you could tack that on, just to be certain.
Okay. Any other questions? Sorry.
Nothing further.
Very good. Okay, anything, any, any other question or comment? Thank you, Laura. Do we have the applicant here? I see there's one person signed up that indicates that he may be with 84 lumber. Are you with the applicant, sir?
Yes.
Okay, come forward, please, if you would. And if you would, for the record, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. It's Jim Zonick. I'm an engineer with 84 lumber out of 84 Pennsylvania. One thing I do want to just clarify, as part of the conditions that we do agree to, it's actually a stucco facade versus hardy plank. So it's basically a little more decorative than hardy plank, but we have agreed to stucco finish on the facade. So, and I'm here to answer any other questions you have, too.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board of, Mr. Zonick? Okay. Any comments? All right. We're going to close the public hearing, and it's, I'll wait the board's pleasure relative to.
Nobody signed up?
No. I only have one person signed up. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward? I'll reopen the hearing. There was only one person signed up, and that was the applicant. Hearing nobody of any interest coming forward, hearing is closed, and any board discussion, or I'll wait the board's pleasure pertaining or pursuant to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve request PB 15-27, that the request is consistent with the 2006 Land Use Plan and Moyoc Small Area Plan because it promotes a new and expanding industry that diversifies the local economy. It has access to major thoroughfare and is appropriately designed and visually buffered. It includes zoning conditions that enhance the appearance and function of the site consistent with the land use plan's community appearance policies. The site is part of the Moyoc Small Area Plan's Industrial Activity Center. Furthermore, I'd like to approve with the following conditions, that a stucco facade construction be employed, that 30% of the front facade include windows, and finally, that the landscaping be allowed to be clustered to improve visibility to the facility by passing motorists.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I would just point out, reading the packet, it appears that this property has been zoned industrial for, I think, close, a little over 45 years. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the board for a motion. I mean, we'll go into a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing no opposition, this motion passes unanimously. The only new business we had for tonight was continued. The next item on our agenda is board appointments, senior advisory. I know I have one. And I would like to appoint Rita Farabee to the Senior Citizen Advisory Board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes unanimously. We have a board. Any further for the senior? Seeing none. Do we have, we have one for the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, I do. I'd like to appoint Zia Montesi as the alternate to the Board of Adjustments.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll, we'll have a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes unanimously. Next item is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner's report. I will start with Commissioner O'Neill.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Payment.
I just wanted to make a note out there. I know Commissioner O'Neill had, had mentioned this in an email, but we had one of our local businesses down in Grandy, I think it was called, was it, the, on Wavy TV10 recently?
Oh, Don Cartwright's barber shop.
Yeah, Don Cartwright's Barber Shop. Yeah, and, you know, he's been there a long time, a local business, and that's where I forgot my first haircut. But if you get a chance to see it, it was a good little interview with Don and the business, and good recognition for, for Currituck. That's all I had, just wanted to recognize him.
If I could just add, to show the generational difference between Commissioner Payment and myself, I used to, and still do get my hair cut there, but I also got my hair cut there when his father, Albert Cartwright, was the barber.
Me, too. I was going to say the same thing.
Well, you'll be aging yourself then, but I just wanted to point out the generational.
Well, we used to go to Sam Wilkins.
And I've been there, too. I tried not to go there if I could help it.
One size fits all. It was a buzz cut.
Zip, zip, zip.
Well, you know, as I've gotten older, I've tried to talk him into getting a kind of a, a, some sort of compensation for my, thank you. And that's a joke. He wouldn't give it to me.
Worked.
It didn't work. All right. Commissioner Gilbert.
Couple things. Just want to remind everybody that early voting is in play for the March 15th primary. There is a ballot for both the Republican, Democratic, and Libertarian. It's county offices included in that. The Board of Elections is open for early voting, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Thursday and Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then Saturday through March 12th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I encourage everybody to get out and exercise your right, your civic duty to vote. I have put some of the flyers out on the table here, so please run by and pick one of those up. And just to remind you to bring your photo IDs when you go to vote. There are sample ballots out, so, you know, feel free to pick those up. And then, you know, Mr. O'Neill always teased me about, you know, I'm always somewhere. But Tuesday night, the Shabur Ruwetans will have a spaghetti dinner, and it is delicious. So please come out from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Shabur Ruwetans on Tuesday night to support the Ruwetans and have a very tasty dinner. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont. Commissioner Idlin.
Yes, sir. I got a phone call this week from a lady over in Gibbs Woods area. They have, their senior center over there is all of you are aware of. We've used it. It is a polling place for Gibbs Woods. I mean, we've used it for community meetings. Numerous things is taking place over there. She called me and said that their heat and AC is completely down. If people look at it, can't be fixed. And they were getting bids to have it replaced. Their funds are next to nothing. The, the funds that they get in is generally from a pancake breakfast once in a while, or something like that. Anyhow, we have an election that's going to be taking place next week. They have asked, would the county support them and help them with that AC unit? I told them I would bring it to the board. So she sent me this afternoon, they had got bids, the, the bid that they sent me, that I assume is their low bid, was $6,100 and some dollars. And so what I'm asking is if the board would support for the county manager to authorize a grant agreement to replace the HVAC unit in the community building that's used, like I say, for, as a voting precinct and, and like I say, we've had community meetings there and, and that type of stuff. Mr. Scanlon, I will ask you, have we, in the past, have we not done the same thing for other venues?
For other venues that have served public purposes or have been polling places? Yes, sir, we have.
Okay. So anyhow, I would just ask the board for that support and.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, my company was one of the businesses that put a bid on that project. So if the board is going to make a motion and bid and take action on this, I'd like to recuse myself from, from this because I was one of the bidding participants on that project.
That needs board appro, does that need board approval?
Yes, the board needed to vote to excuse Commissioner Payment.
All right.
So I'll make a motion that we excuse Mr. Payment.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. And to recuse Commissioner Payment, if this motion moves, if a further motion moves forward to, to provide this service. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none?
Are we going to move forward with it, I guess?
Well, now, yeah.
Okay, well, then I'm going to leave then while you all discuss this.
Now, you can move forward, Frank.
Sure. Now, we can have, Commissioner Idlin has made a request. We've heard it. We've heard the question answered by the county manager. Any discussion relative to this?
I second that motion.
Okay.
If it's needed as a motion, I'll make it as a motion, then.
I think it would be appropriate to have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that we authorize county manager to enter into a grant agreement to, for the sum of the, whatever the contract was, I think $6,130 or $40 or whatever, for the, to replace the HVAC in the community building that will be our polling place next week, and it's used for other county functions at times.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposed, motion passes unanimously. Well, unanimously. Mr. Scanlon, would you ask Commissioner Payment to come back, please? All right, thank you. I have nothing to add tonight for the Commissioner's report. County manager, do you have anything to report tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, just, I guess, for the record correct, at a previous meeting, Commissioner Beaumont had asked or had, had made comment that during the budget process, we had set aside some funding for the, to start looking at the Moyoc Park. I did not recall that at the meeting, but we've had a chance to go back and look at that, and the board has, in fact, set aside money to start that process. And we are in the, in the process now of collecting or receiving requests for qualifications for landscape architects to start working with the county staff and the Moyoc community on putting some preliminary designs for a park in the Moyoc facility. But I wanted to report that back to the board.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Scanlon, the piece of property in question, when that was given to the county, was it a designation, designated use for that piece of property?
Public purpose. Thank you.
And it was discussed that it would be used for a public park when it was given to the community.
Along with the boat ramp facilities.
We also received a boat ramp at the same time, or properties for a boat ramp.
I was asked that question. I did not know for sure. I just knew it'd been given to the county.
If I can, just to elaborate, it, the Board of Commissioners retreat a year ago, not the most current one, the county staff had brought to the Board of Commissioners several parcels of land to look at, to see if we could acquire for a park. The board and the community had expressed an interest that we were looking for something in the 20 to 30-plus acres. Having water access would be ideal. The county staff went out and identified, there's very few parcels that actually meet that qualification. There was one in Moyoc that did. We started negotiating with the owners of that property. Although they are willing to discuss with the county the potential of that land being a future park, at this time, the family, it's with heirs, at this time, the family was not prepared to sell it today. So at this past retreat, the board had asked the staff with that in mind, so that, so this could still be the target and eventually, you know, where we'd like to go to. But in the meantime, there is property that the county already owns, and the board directed the county staff to go ahead and look at developing that 20, 25 acres as a, a park facility. And so that is the parcel that we are currently receiving RFQs under. And I, and I don't think, from the board conversation, that this is meant to be the only park or the park of Moyoc, but it's property that we do own. It is substantial size, it's 25 acres. And again, we're working with a landscape architect. We'll have a series of community meetings to start putting together the interest of what the community, what amenities they'd like to see in the park, and bring back for the board's consideration in a couple of months, a, a design or schematic for the board's consideration.
Furthermore, from that as well, I know there's been some interest with the YMCA about doing some type of a day. about doing some type of a day camp deal. Would you explain that? That question come up as well, and I didn't have a good explanation for it.
The county was actually approached several years ago. The Y.M.C.A. had a, they were in a partnership with the city of Chesapeake to do a facility out at Northwest Park. The Y.M.C.A. has identified, at that time, identified Southern Chesapeake as an area that they would like to look at putting in day camp. And for various different reasons, that project did not progress. And so when we, we have a very successful partnership with the Y.M.C.A. at our facility at Maple, and in one of those meetings, they had brought to our attention that they have an interest in looking at bringing a day camp facility down into, at that time, Southern Chesapeake, and we asked them, would they consider the Moyoc area? We had an opportunity to staff, and I think some commissioners at the time, we went and toured some of their day camp facilities that they had out in the Suffolk area, and were showing us how they could come together with the local government and partner, and they have since come back to us and expressed an interest to look in the basic model they used in Suffolk, which doesn't have to be the model we used, but the one they showed us, was the county would bring the land and the core infrastructure, the parking, stormwater, bring the core civil work to the table, and the Y would bring funding in, and they built amenities. At that particular facility, they built a competition swimming pool. They built a community building where they could do not only arts and crafts, but they could have food in it. They had several outbuildings where they could do various different arts and crafts. You could have picnics and various things. So they would bring money to the table where they would build out different amenities, and again, the county would be responsible. So it would be a way for the county to leverage our dollars and get more amenities than we would otherwise be able to do. When it was being used for a day camp, the Y would have access to it, and they would use it, and when it was not, then it would be open and available for the public's use. And so, but that's the model that's in Suffolk. They proposed that to us. My understanding is the Southampton Roads Y has actually set aside a couple, either a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars to start looking at that effort, and so we could partner with the money the county's bringing to the table to start looking to see how far we can get with that. So it's not a given, but is a potential, another opportunity to partner with them to bring a facility, and again, we've had such a very good success at Maple that we might be able to duplicate or replicate something in the Moyoc area.
Okay. One more question, and I'll quit. So the Y will have a footprint, but they won't own the park?
That's correct.
The county will own the park.
The county would own the park.
All right. The amenities that they put in, there'll be a free, there'll be free amenities? I mean, it's kind of hard to have a public park for our citizens. It's, I mean, we've got a recreation center is one thing, but a park is a different thing.
Correct.
So I...
That is my understanding, and again, now we haven't sat down and started developing language, but my understanding from the Suffolk model, and of course, we don't, I mean, again, we'll negotiate our own deal here, is you did not have to be a member of the Y to use, I mean, it is a county park, and so anybody would be able to go in and use the facility. That is my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Scanlon, I'm gonna clarify that there will be some public meetings, and there will be some citizen input to these decisions.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Those were just general questions that I got the other night, and I'm just trying to get the answers to them, that's all.
And we might have an agreement that we could put together. The community might come back and feel like this is not the direct, so at this stage, there's nothing in writing. There's no, you know, we are very much at the preliminary beginning stages, and we will be going, in fact, the contract with the architect will be having a series of community meetings where the community can come to us and tell us what amenities they would like to see in the park, and we'll work around the wishes and desires of the Moyoc community.
The one thing I would suggest, and then just lest some of this be misinterpreted, swimming pools are never free. So if the Y builds a swimming pool, I would expect that there'd be an admission fee associated with using that facility. It's that way in every community swimming pool facility I've ever been associated with. So lest we convey an image of a free use of a pool, that's probably not gonna happen.
Yeah, that, Mr. Beaumont, that's not what I was talking about. There will be, if somebody wants to go out there and go walk around the park, the Y.M.C.A. or nobody's gonna charge them a fee to go do that, or go out and picnic, or use the pavilions, or whatever. That's what I was talking about.
I believe the schematic that the manager shared with us at the retreat is they would take a small footprint, and the county, out of the twenty-five acres, would have fifteen to twenty would be a totally public, free park, and they would have a small footprint where they would build the pavilions and a swimming pool and various other things, so.
Separate entity.
Separate, that's correct.
That was my understanding as well. Thank you.
And along the line of the recreation, I was out today at the Maple Park where the ballfields are being built, and really making progress out there, so it was good to see, and it was kind of exciting to see the plan coming together.
If I could, just as a question, I guess for my edification as well as maybe some of the people watching tonight, part of the monies that are gonna go for the park, this park and other parks, part of that, does that come out of the "in lieu of" that we have with developments that come before us, and if they do, could you explain some of that? Because there's always a concern about, you know, the money. Where's it coming from? And first, I guess my first question, does the "in lieu of," and I don't know the exact verbiage that we have with developments that come that pay into recreational-type things, how does that juxtapose with this?
Yes, sir. What you're speaking to is this was an amendment that was put in the U.D.O. a couple of years ago, where historically, when a developer came in, they had to set aside some small amount of open space, and they had to make active recreation, and we ended up with, or were certainly ending up with, a bunch of one-acre parks with swingsets, and the board started looking at a better tool to where we could have a more significant amenity for the community as a whole. The small community parks tend to be not well-maintained. They can become attractive nuisances. We've had several communities that come to us that have had expressed problems with their parks. So the payment in lieu of is at the county's discretion, they can ask a developer, instead of putting in this one-acre active recreation, they can put a like-sum amount of cash into an account, and the county has divided, we have established a map, I think we have maybe five, four, four, four different regions that encompass the entire county, and so if a developer comes in Region A, and we evoke a payment in lieu of, they'll make a cash contribution into a fund, and that fund is used to develop, maintain, and enhance the park in that facility. So all the funds that we've received for the Moyoc area, they're compelled by statutes to be used in that fashion, so they will be used and put into this park as we develop it. So it will be part of the funding, and historically, although we're not there yet, we don't even know what this, you know, what the park's gonna look like, historically, we've used a combination of occupancy tax and land transfer tax to develop, to finish out funding, so we have, I'm not sure if we've ever really used general property tax to do that. So it'd be a combination of those revenues.
I'm glad to see we've planned ahead for that, to do, make that happen.
Well, one of the things, and the reason I brought this up, because money's always an interest of who pays, how much is it gonna cost, one of the few things, my understanding, that the county can do, that falls under the auspices of an impact fee, is this "in lieu of" that we have for these, this park-type acquisitions or buildings. And we hear all the time, and the board's aware, that a lot of times when developers come in, there's always the impression, if not the reality, that after they leave, there are services and unfunded liabilities that fall on the shoulders of the taxpayers going forward, that we're precluded in trying to get from the developer because of state law that denies the ability to, the counties, to charge the developer an impact fee to cover the future uses. So this is one of the few things that we can do, and I'm glad to see that it's moving forward for the county, and particularly Moyoc for this park. All right. All right. With anything, any further, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll go into the next item on the public, is public comment. We have several signed up tonight. I put your name on there.
Thanks, Chair.
And first we have signed up is Kevin McCord.
Thank you. I had to put some notes down so I could stay focused. I'd like to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'd also like to thank the commissioners. I've received a phone call from all of them, reference to what I'm gonna speak to about tonight. Like I said, I wish this was a positive note, but it's not. What I would like to address, the commissioners, has to deal with a citizen in our community of Mr. John Snowden. He's currently on the Economic Advisory Board. This individual goes on social media daily, hourly, pretty much minutely, and blasts his opinions and anything on everything, you know, about what's going on, which is his, which is his free right. It's a free country that we live in. But this keyboard warrior, is what I'm gonna refer to him as, he constantly disrespects bullies, insults, respected citizens of this community on social networks daily. And he currently is an advisory board member on the economic board, which I don't think is very classy. I'm just gonna bring up a few names, just to hit the high points on a few things. First off, a couple of weeks ago, he attacked my wife. I've never had a problem with John. I've lent John stuff for his farm equipment. I've bought vegetables from him. Never had a problem with him. Helped him with some stuff a few, a couple of months ago with the Sheriff's Department. Been nothing but nice to the guy. Never had a problem with him. He attacks my wife, who's a mother to four sons, a daughter to two respected parents, sister and brother who are taxpayers of this county. She told him on social media that there was no reason to be an, scoot, I mean, it's not a bad word, no reason to be an ass to nice people who were just simply asking questions. A lady was asking questions regarding a shots-fired call that occurred in Brumsey Landing. We live in there. It was around 5:00 a.m. in the morning, and it was kind of a strange situation to hear shots fired at 5:00 a.m. in the morning in any neighborhood. It's not hunting season. After she made the question, you know, of there's no, you know, for they're just simply asking, his reply was, "There's no reason to be a flaming," I'm not gonna say the word because that is a vulgar word. It's another term for the female anatomy, starts with the letter C, ends with the letter T. Everybody else can plug the other two letters in. I'm not gonna do that. I just don't understand who does that, and I don't also understand how this guy's on an economic development board, or any board, anything. He's yet to apologize to me. We did have a conversation on the phone. It wasn't very good. I was not very happy. But there was, you know, with what I do for a living, there was no threats made. There was no, and I'm sure he probably recorded what I said to him, which I don't really care. Number two, Steve Van Heis, he used to be the Assistant Fire Chief for the Crawford Fire Department. Super guy. He's a county employee, part-time county employee. He's also a cancer survivor. Super, super guy. I know I've already said that. He is still an active member of the Crawford Fire Department. His wife works for the clerk's office. He has two daughters that live here in the community, and he's a granddad. Mr. Snowden's comment to him was that he's a crackhead, so pretty degrading as well. At least it wasn't swear words. And then the third one, I'm not gonna go into major detail. I mean, he's attacked the staff, as well as the Clerk of Superior Court, Ray Matusko, who's my friend. There's some political background behind that, and I'm not going into that. But constantly taking pictures, questioning, is the clerk at work, or are they busy being the hall monitor? Like I said, I'm not here for a political reason. I'm just here because I'm, you know, sick of this guy's mouth. With what I do for a living, I pretty much can't do nothing about it, but I don't want him to be on an economic board. I don't want him to be on any board. I was gonna ask Commissioner Hall, who I did speak to as well, who's not here, if he would remove him from that board at this time. I don't know if I have the authority to ask for votes for him to be removed from. I mean, I don't know. I know I used to sit up there with you guys, and these less-than-hour meetings, we never had them when I was up there. But, like I said, you know, and I know his, I spoke to Commissioner Payment, who also called and was super-nice and apologized, and he advised me that he wasn't gonna be reappointed. I don't want him on it for five more seconds. And like I said, Commissioner Hall's not here. I don't know where he is. But, I mean, basically, that's, you know, what I'm asking for you guys' help for. I mean, like I said, I can, I mean, I could name more instances. I mean, if somebody calls a subdivision wrong, the lady, they just moved here. My wife knew them. Very nice couple. They live in my neighborhood, and she said, "Did anybody hear the shots in Brumsey?" And John just chimed in and just multiply assaulted her about Brumsey, whereas, you know, because they didn't say Brumsey Landing, Brumsey Road, Brumsey Law Firm, whatever it is. I mean, it was just juvenile. I mean, he's a grown man, you know, attacking somebody's wife, mother, whatever. So do I, I mean, do I, is that something that can be voted on? I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking, I guess, to the chairman.
It's my understanding, and I will look for further guidance, but it's my understanding for board appointments, that they are individually made by the commissioner for that district, but they serve at the commissioner's, the entirety of the board's pleasure. That being said, it's my understanding, if they serve at the board's pleasure, they can be removed by majority of the board for cause. Is that correct?
Does not require cause. The ordinance provides, in this particular case, that the individuals serve at the pleasure of the board.
So just the pleasure of the board?
They can be removed for any reason at any time.
Okay. That's the response.
Like I said, I mean, Commissioner Hall's not here. I know that was his appointment to that board. Like I said, I mean, it was basically just a question. One more thing, if I would, and then I'll leave. I know my time's expired. I was appointed to the Parks and Rec Board by Commissioner Hall. I don't know if I need to issue a letter of resignation or resign. I've lived here pretty much thirty-some years, and I don't want my name affiliated to any of this type of stuff that's been going on regarding, you know, Mr. Snowden, and, you know, anybody that he appoints, I wouldn't wanna be affiliated, so if I need to come by the county manager's office and turn in a letter of resignation, which I hate to do because, you know, I've coached almost eighty sports teams in the county, but, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm just, I'm very disgusted, so.
Kevin, I would ask you to reconsider that, because you are an asset to the Recreation Board, and I think the people that's on that board know it. And I know your history with working with kids and what you do for the athletics in our county, and I would ask you to reconsider that, and I just...
I'll sleep on it for the night. How about that, and I'll see Dan tomorrow.
I would echo that, too, because it's almost like, I mean, the county would suffer the loss. The county would suffer the loss, in my opinion, my considered opinion, were you to remove your services that have been very, I mean, very welcome and very valuable to the county. I mean, it's difficult to get volunteers, and it's even more difficult to get qualified, caring, committed volunteers. So it would be, with all due respect, a detriment to the county to lose your, to lose your services. That's my opinion.
Okay.
And let me just comment, you know, Kevin, going up here, too, you know, with your involvement in sports, I've been there, too, and it would be a detriment to, to lose you on the recreational boards. I wish you would, you know, think about that. I think as a board, though, what we need to look at as well, moving forward at this juncture, I don't believe that when we bring on any type of advisory board personnel for any position, I know the commissioners have a code of ethics and conduct that we have to go to and understand what, you know, what our position is, and I think going forward, we probably should have some kind of an orientation document for any advisory board individuals, to let them know that, you know, there are certain standards that we all should live up to in some ethics. I mean, do we have, we currently don't have anything for the, do we, Mr. McCree, for advisory board personnel with that matter?
Some boards, I'm more aware, have actually formal training. The Board of Adjustment regularly has training, particularly when a new member comes on board. The Planning Board, I think, has training from staff. I thought there, we had gotten to the point where all the advisory boards now had some type of orientation material that was given to a member of a board.
That speaks on the, you know, on ethics and...
Maybe not specifically on ethics, but it's certainly not a bad idea to see what we are providing members for orientation and to make sure we bolster it. I sent you an email due to Commissioner Payment's... Uh, I sent you an email due to Commissioner Payment's, um, comments last week or thoughts last week and, and suggesting we can put it on the next agenda, whether the board might want to include advisory board members and, and make them subject to your code of ethics, uh, which so far I've heard from several of you which, which concur with that position. So, we can certainly put that forward at your, at your next meeting.
Mr. McCree, would, would a code of ethics cover what would generally, could generally be, in this case, basic civility maybe or questions of decorum? I mean, just, I mean, is that, that to me, it doesn't fall under the per number, if you will, of, of ethics per se?
It, it, I mean, it gives someone a, a basic foundation of expectation of behavior. Certainly it's not going to in and of itself, as you noted, call someone to be civil or, or act mannerly, um, in, in a given situation.
All right. That notwithstanding, I, I would just for comment to the board, I would not want to do anything that would restrict what we already have now, that an advisory board member serve at the pleasure of the board. I wouldn't want, if we want to add the code of ethics, I, I, that certainly, we, we could do that as well, but I would not want to impair a future board or this board from having the ability to.
Such an amendment would not modify, uh, the fact that, that advisory board members serve at your pleasure. There, there are some, some exceptions with like the board of adjustment, uh, who, who under statute serve and may be removed for cause, but the, the advisory boards that this body has created by ordinance, uh, that serve, the members serve at the pleasure of this board.
I also would concur that Mr. McCord does not need to resign from the Recreation Board. He's been a good member and done a lot in the community over the years and that board does need to continue to have his voice on it, so.
I'll sleep on that one. I, I appreciate the kind words and I also appreciate, like I said, I was contacted by all seven of you. I appreciate that. Like I said, I just, I mean, it was just uncalled for. But thank you all.
Kevin, I too would echo, but it uncategorically. However, he raised a question that I think we need to discuss. And that, and that has to do with, um, you know, there are three questions that occur to me just off the top of my head. And the first one is, is there any doubt as to what the positional responsibility that Mr. Snowden had associated with economic development? Do we have any doubt that that's perceived to be one of the major, most important boards within this county? Does anybody have a doubt? The second question is, is there any doubt that the terminology that he used against Mrs. McCord and/or Stephen Van Nice, is there any doubt that that, that terminology is offensive? I mean, we're, you know, those, that term, I rarely hear, you know? So, I think unequivocally, that's considered probably one of the crudest terms that's, that's used by, uh, modern slang today. And then finally, uh, considering the fact that his term expires naturally this month, does that really matter? In that, do we send it, do we send the appropriate message by allowing that term to expire?
I guess, has the, has it already expired or is he due to the end of this month for that position? Or is it?
I have a, I have, and I, yes, we all have received a copy of a communication under the signature of Mr. Snowden that says that he is writing to ask that his name be withdrawn from consideration for reappointment to the at-large consensus appointment position he currently holds with the Currituck EDA B Board. He goes in and says, "After careful consideration and evaluation of my current commitments, including increased responsibilities at my full-time job, our growing farm operation, ongoing improvements, renovation at the Greg Snowden House in Maple and a major IT, a major IT consulting project for which I have committed, I will not be able to devote my full attention to the EDAB Board and its concerns. I will fulfill my commitment to work with Josh Bass at the Currituck Chamber of Commerce to improve searchability indexing of the bi-local Currituck database and other technol- technological issues. Regards, John." That's what we have.
I think that Commissioner Hall should be present at the time any action is taken. As he recommended, the name, he should be present at the appointed time if the board decides to take action.
Does the position remain filled until an alternate takes the place?
Yes. A, 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 a person continues to serve until such time as their successor is appointed.
So, we can suspend action on this act, this, until next meeting, assuming Commissioner Hall is in attendance?
Yes, and Mr. Snowden.
Would it be appropriate for Mr. McCord then to have to come back and present the evidence as currently presented to this board? Is that, is that a reasonable burden to place on Mr. McCord?
Well, I, I guess one other question, that email that he sent, is that construed as a resignation toward the end of that one? He said he could not fulfill his.
I, I did not read it that way.
Okay, because he said he could not fulfill his duties anymore? He, okay.
He just said he was writing to ask for, for be consideration for reappointment.
However it needs to be done, I believe Mr. Hall needs to be, again, as Mr. Rooney said, I think he's the one, he appointed him. He needs to have the first shot of doing whatever needs to be done and then go from there. I mean, that's kind of.
So, I'm sorry. So, let me ask.
I live two miles from here, so I can come back. That's no problem.
Well, I guess I was going to ask, did you talk to Mr. Hall specifically about this?
Yeah, every commissioner called me. He called me and we spoke and, and I advised him and he said it was uncalled for and, and we had a decent conversation and I talked to him twice. But I mean, you know, he's, he hasn't stopped. I mean, he's, I mean, which, you know, Commissioner Hall doesn't have the authority to, you know, tell him what he can and can't do and what time to go to bed and, you know, whatever. But, um, he did speak to him and he told me, as well as Commissioner Payment told me today, that, that he was, was not going to continue to be on the board, which, I mean, I just.
You've yet to receive an, an apology.
No, no, not at all.
Any kind of.
He, I, he, he called me a liar and like I said, I said some choice words to him. I mean, I've told you guys what the word he said to my wife. Um, I mean, that was all I did, due to what I do for a living. Uh, I'm better than that. Um, my parents raised me better than that, but he, um, yet to apologize. He's got my number. He could send me a text message. But, you know, like I said, it's.
Was Commissioner Hall aware you were coming here to this evening?
Um, no. Not, not that I know of, no. And, and the other thing is too, like you, like you guys said, that he is the Economic Development Board. My wife's a mortgage lender. New people come into the town, she gives them everything they need to know, so forth and so on. Like I said, this is a new lady that just came in here that he was attacking, not the first one. If you call Tolles Creek, not Road or something, he bashes you on that too and correct, I mean, like I said, he's just a poor representative for any board, for the county, in my opinion.
I'm, you know, depending on what the board does, if the board wants to hold off from Mr. Hall, that's fine, but if that is the, and I'll stand and await, is that something that we're, we would move to or not move to?
Well, there, there, there's potentially another option and I just toss it out here. I believe we have the authority, we could temporarily suspend Mr. Snowden if the board so desires, until a motion or a recommendation is made by his appointing commissioner. Would that be?
I, I don't think you have that option available to you.
Of course not. All right.
Well, Mr. McCord, I would echo everything else. Um, you're an asset to the Recreation Board, although you were Mr. Hall's appointment, I would definitely ask you to reconsider. Um, I've served on the, as an ex-officio of the Recreation Board and, and that board, I mean, i- is so important to the kids and to the parks and recreations, um, to this county and, and you are an asset. So, please consider staying on that board because, um, the citizens are the ones that really, really need you.
If I could, and, and this is belated, I hope you would accept the apology from this board and extend the apology to your wife for, for these actions. Anything, in my opinion, that our advisory boards do and or commissioners do, including me, reflects on the county and the image that we, we try, we try to, to maintain. And so, any acts or actions that emanate from either this board or its appointees reflects, the buck stops here with these commissioners. So, I would ask that you accept this board's apologies and convey them to your wife.
And I appreciate it and I appreciate all the phone calls. Thank you guys. And if I need to come back, I can do that too.
All right. I have next on public, I'm sorry.
So, we're going to hold off?
Well, that seems to be the general consensus. I'm, I'm, well, I'm not going to make the decision.
I think Mr. Hall needs to be, um, weigh in on this, um, since Mr. Snowden is his appointment. Um, he does serve as the chairman of that board, um, and our Economic Development Board is, person is not here. So, I would, I would say that we need to have Mr. Hall weigh in on, on his, what actions he's taken.
Understood.
Uh, Mr., just correction, um, John Snowden is not the chairman of that board anymore. He was, we had elections in January. He is just a standing member at this point. Uh, yes. No, I, I, I agree. I'd like to, um, I, I know there's some other people signed up. I don't know if there's any other individuals that have signed up that want to address this. If there are, I'd like to hear everything at this point, so let's just wait till we hear all the.
I, I, at this point, at this time, I would, I will recognize, uh, former commissioner, Paul Martin, if he would come forward.
It's good to be here again, uh, even, uh, you know, uh, under the circumstances that I have to speak to. I will say that, uh, as foul a word that was used to describe a man's wife and a mother of four children, John Snowden has done worse and is at this moment doing it now. He has totally tried to destroy my daughter-in-law with untrue statements about her online and false documents that he has shown and is still doing it. The hypocrisy of you allowing someone who has threatened to shoot down aircraft coming in and taking off at our own airport to sit on a board and he again shows what he is. I came here to talk about ethics and the need for a code of ethics and you have hit on that idea also, because we do not need individuals representing this county in any way, shape or form, serving the people. This is a despicable individual. An attorney was hired who sent him a letter notifying him of what he had done. John Snowden online, using his forum, which is social media, called it bullshit. Ladies and gentlemen, you have a problem here. You have a problem with the people in this county. I know how hard that job is setting up there at times if you do it right. The absence of Commissioner Hall, he knew exactly what was going on and he didn't want, he didn't want to hear it. He didn't want to bear that heat because he is an employee of the halls. Who do you think is, uh, reaping the seeds that, uh, John Snowden has sown throughout this county? His wife, who's being opposed by one of the finest young business women in this county and they are trying to destroy her character, calling her a drunk, saying that she has been, she has committed embezzlement? Not a bit of that is true and you can call the sheriff of this county and she will tell you so. John Snowden should have been removed several months ago because of his actions. He slanders. He has created libel. As your county attorney will tell you, it is very difficult, especially if you are an elected official or running for office. How'd that $50,000 go down Mr. Rooney? You remember being accused of taking that kickback. But when you personally attack someone who is just running for the register of deeds to have her whole professional life destroyed and you don't want to remove him from a board? Let me tell you something, being on the other side, I'm talking to people in this county. I'm talking to business people. You have such anger against you, it's unbelievable. Most of it comes from the actions of John Snowden and his relationship to this election of register of deeds. Also, you better be aware that people, because you are incumbents, feel the pressure when you go to them and ask them, can I put a sign on your property? Can I leave some of my literature here? They feel intimidated by you. And that goes back to what I said. It goes back to John Snowden and his hiring by Denise Hall. Mr. Scanlon, I have defended you in this county. You would not believe what people have said to you. Commissioner Beaumont, you sir felt just a taste of it last week, as did you, Commissioner Idler. When people start after you, you have no defense. You must sit there. And I sit and listen to you. You swore an oath. There are ethics. You are required to stand up for them. There is honor. There is a goodness of heart. We are human beings and we do not deserve the nastiness that is going on right now among us. I thank you for your time. This was not what I came here to fully say, although I have went over it. Mr. McCord and I are not the only ones who could come before you. Please, you need to act together now and as a board you can. You can remove him because you put him there. And that in itself will show people of the county and other people that you do care and that you do listen and that you can act responsible. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. And I don't know.
Do we have anybody else sign up?
Yes. Yeah, I was just going to respond. I was just going to respond. It doesn't, does any of the commissioners want to respond to the comments?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
You read from an email that said that John Snowden is working for the county? I would like to also tell you, in that email, he said he was working for the Chamber of Commerce in some way or other? When the bi-local campaign and the bi-local campaign is a campaign that is totally funded by the county?
Not only totally funded, but up until just recently was an operation of the Currituck County of this, of the Travel and Tourism Board.
I believe that's illegal and I think it needs to be looked into also. John Snowden should have no part or parcel of receiving a dime from this county. Thank you.
I'm going to make a comment on this social media as several of, of you, as well as myself, it's, it's totally out of control. People are putting things on there with no basis of fact, no, no truth and just constantly... People are putting things on there with no basis of fact, no truth, and just constantly slandering people, whether you be an elected commissioner or one who's running for office or it does not matter. Paul Martin also was subject to the same thing several years ago, as I and most of you have. Some of you newer guys haven't been around long enough to get everybody upset because you didn't vote their way yet, but it's common. And it's really, it's really gotten to where, I talk to people in other communities that are on boards, and they don't even want to serve anymore because of the just slanderous, defamatory things that go out there. And it's easy to, you know, sit behind a keyboard when you're not looking at somebody and put some really hateful, nasty things out there, and then somebody's got to one-up it, and then the next one. And I really see it, and it's not just in this community. As I said, I talked to other elected officials, and it's really going to dry the well up to where decent people are no longer going to run for office. They're just, they're just not going to do it. I mean, why would you want to subject yourself to such vitriol and hatred and slander for no reason? And our staff, they get the same thing. And I think even some of those sites are administered by people we know, and it's just unbelievable. And these two gentlemen have certainly brought to the forefront, to the board, something that is just not acceptable.
The question is, the beast that is social media is the beast. The point of reference is, this is someone who serves on a high-visibility board within this county and is participating in that junk online. About a month ago, Coach John Wheeler at the Currituck High School Football Program put out an email where kids lost their scholarships because of stuff they posted on social media. And the point was, be careful, because you can affect your future by your activities online. And so, the same lesson that he's trying to teach his kids, our young adults of the future, is exactly what we're talking about right here. And, you know, regardless of what we decide to do tonight, we have a responsibility to the citizens of Currituck in that here's an individual who stands in a position of authority, whether he's the chairman of the board or just a member of that board. He is in a position of visibility and of authority. And I want to go on record that I absolutely believe that kind of conduct is completely unbecoming of anyone that should be associated with this county. And the fastest possible avenue that we can take to divest that individual from being able to claim Currituck County in any part of an email signature, because he can still send stuff out and claim as a member of the Economic Development Board, that we need to take it. And I'm sorry Commissioner Hall couldn't be here, but his absence is no excuse for us doing what really needs to be done.
Mr. Chair, I know in attendance, we do have the elected chair for the Economic Advisory Board, and I didn't know if he had signed up or if he wanted to make any comments regarding this matter, if you do.
And, okay, I would ask that you state your name if you... Come on up, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Sam Miller. I am the chairman currently for the Economic Development Board this year. This would be my second year on the board. I do apologize for my presentation. I came directly from work. I'm the general contractor in the county. I came specifically tonight because I was aware that this issue would probably come up, and I came that someone may ask what my feelings and my opinion is on it. So, that's why I haven't signed up, but I did come to see if I could offer some support for that. I think in today's day and age, it's more important than ever that we pay attention to character, presentation, and how we act. I talk to my children about it. If you did somebody wrong, then you need to go take care of it. And I think it's important that we, myself included, we step up and we do act in ways that we would want our children to act, in a way that we can be proud for our children as well as for other members of our community. I don't agree with what Mr. Snowden had done. I think it's out of context. I think it's out of character. I think it's inappropriate. And I'd ask all of you, based on your abilities and what you can do, look into your hearts and do what you think is right, but do what you think you'd be proud of and those things. And I think that asking for that removal of Mr. Snowden, I would be in your support of that. I think that that's not someone that should be not part of it. I don't speak unfairly as somebody, and I try to, if I don't have something good to say, I try to keep my mouth shut. That's what you should do. But, based on my position as chairman, and I was elected by my peers as well on that board to be the chairman, I think I do need to say something, and I think that, yes, I would agree, and I would stand in support with you if you were to remove Mr. Snowden from that board. I think it does send the right message. I think it's appropriate that we do need to be held with standard. That's why I feel bad tonight, standing here in my work clothes and unshaven, but I think it's more about a person's character than the clothing that you're wearing back. And I'd ask you to consider that if you need to do something privately, or otherwise, I'm not aware of all the appropriate manners, so you can have a discussion. But, I would ask you to look at it, and if it was my decision and you asked me, then I would say, yes, I'm sorry, but if your actions don't deem you worthy to serve on this, even though you are stepping down, I would ask you to be removed, and that's what I would do.
Mr. Miller, thank you for coming forward. Your attire is fine.
Jealous, actually.
Yes, your attire is fine, and it is just inconsequential, given the demeanor, the sincerity, and your presence before us and your well-thought-out comments. And I've never met you before, but I'm impressed with your presentation and your demeanor, and I do thank you for your insight. I would say, I would say that I understand Commissioner O'Neill's language relative to having the appointing commissioner, in this case Commissioner Hall, speak to this, but I'm also...
I'll certainly waive that, Mr. Greg.
I also feel compelled, I also feel compelled by the language from Commissioner Beaumont that if this board just, if the board hesitates, or if the board is in appearance to hesitate, what kind of message does that send? I don't know.
Mr. Chair, can I just interject here right now, if you don't mind, please?
Sure.
Again, and thank you, Mr. Miller. I wanted you to come up and speak on this, because the E D board did elect you as the chair, and I respect and I appreciate your comments. I grew up with John, went to school with him all my life. I've known him for a long time. But, based on everything that's transpired with the code, the ethics, and the conversation I had with John, and for the benefit of this county and the E D board and businesses, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we remove John effective immediately from the E D advisory board.
I will second that, if it includes any of the dealings that he's also dealing with the county, as far as the chamber.
I don't think...
Can we...
Right now, I just want to address the E D board advisory board.
Yes, yes. Let's do that.
And I would second that.
I'll second that.
Just for discussion, I certainly was not trying to inhibit the inevitable. I just wanted to give Mr. Hall the opportunity tomorrow to do what needed to be done as the commissioner who he appointed. So, I know what the penalty should be, certainly, and so, that was my reasons for that. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? If not, we have...
Sit down.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Miller, sit down.
Sure, please, you can sit down.
I told you that I'd stand with you, so if you need something, I'm here.
I like you.
You know him, he went to rally with us.
Yes, and, oh, that's right. In any event, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, in opposition, motion passes unanimously. I have back to public comment, and Ann Dale?
She's departed.
She departed? I hope it wasn't anything I said.
Sam, I reminded him that he does know you, that we all went to rally one day. You're just dressed different today.
I stand corrected. Ms. Shannon?
My name is Wendy Shannon, live at 204 Puddin Ridge Road. My train of thought is completely off the track of what I was going to say earlier. I would like to thank you for what you just did. I, too, have seen a number of things on Facebook. Facebook is a wonderful tool when properly used. I use it to keep in touch with family, friends, past information. I can't tell you how invaluable it has been for the Moyauk Concerned Citizens Group, which was the subject of my conversation. You're able to reach people in a way that you otherwise would not be able to do. However, it can be the most damaging avenue for people to hide, exactly what you said, behind a keyboard with fake names and do a lot of damage. I've seen a lot of things that, I don't know that they necessarily shocked me, but I was surprised to see what was out there now. This is probably the most contentious bit of information and commentary related to election I've ever seen. It's like what you see on the national scene, and I really hate to see that here. Any of you that know me at all know that I try, even if I completely disagree with you, I try to be polite, respectful. We can agree to disagree, but as I said at the meeting the other night, when we invited those commissioners and candidates that could come, they joined the Moyauk Concerned Citizens Group meeting. I said then, we have to look each other in the eye. In this county, in this small community, we see each other in the grocery store. We see each other at the car dealership or at the coffee stand, and it's just a different kind of thing. And to me, it's much more damaging when this kind of thing happens to those people that we're neighbors with. I do want to thank the folks that were able to come. I know there was some confusion about open meeting rules, but we did have a nice turnout, and it was a bit interesting. It was kind of the verbal version of Facebook in some ways. I do wish that I had been able to control some of it a little bit better, but I did not want to dampen the passion that some folks showed in their concerns for the county, what they wanted to see. So, I would like to just offer that if there was something you wanted to know or wanted to ask that you didn't get a chance to because of some of the excitement, please feel free to contact me, message me, phone calls or email. I believe you all have my contact information. Thank you again for your consideration. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. That's all that I have signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public comment and entertain a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
And I will second that motion.
I beat her.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.